We'll call the meeting to order four thirty September seventeenth. At the regular meeting this, September third, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make them watch you through September ninth.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, so more. We've had two resignations from the Board of Education for town of Morris from Region Twenty four of that. One is Andy Peta. The other one's Jennifer Munson. So, we have pretty much thirty days. We need to have a town meeting and have elections for new members. Looking at October fifteenth, it's a Tuesday, six o'clock possibly. Kind of want to give us enough time to find people that are willing to serve and get it done. I know it's gonna kind of hold up the Board of Ed a little bit for at least one meeting. Not sure if there's any others in between. I think their next they have a special meeting coming up Thursday night, and I think they have another meeting October seventeenth. They may have something in between as well. I really want to get those seats filled. And I, you know, I definitely take these resignations with regret. They both, you know, tried hard there. It's a difficult situation. It's been tough on their families and tough on themselves and, you know, wish them well and thank them for everything they did for us. So, I think at our October second?
Meeting first.
First? Yeah. At our next meeting. At our next meeting, we can finalize the call because just in case something comes up that we can also add to that call, we might as well do it, you know, all in one town meeting. I don't believe we had any appointments. I mean, kind of quick, well, we'll have some discussion. Correspondence, none unless you have anything.
No.
First documents report, which will lead into a little bit of a, you know, an update here for Region Twenty. But first quickly, the solar lease, solar lease has been signed and recorded, so we expect construction to begin in spring or early summer over at the transfer station. There's a meeting next Wednesday here at ten o'clock with the OT regarding the town center. Hopefully, you can make it. That would be great.
This Wednesday or next Wednesday?
Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. I did let Richard Skelton know, Richard and Tinka. I'm gonna try to get ahold of Dave Fisher and Steve Cook, since they're all kind of gonna be part of this, to let them know about the meeting and they can join in and on the conversation. Line striping, that got kind of passed us. He had to hurry up and get the contractor going on it. But we definitely reduced what that initial list we had for roads. So, currently, they're gonna do the line striping on West Morris Road, Elaine White, Eldridge, East Shore, Todd Hill, Stoddard and Benedict. All those roads with the double yellow lines and the stop bars. And all the rest of the roads are just gonna get the stop bars, you know, at each of the stop signs at each end. So, they may be doing, they did some of it already. They're supposed to be coming back Wednesday night, hopefully before any weather gets here. They've been working on processing firewood from trees that were moved, removed this year from town property, and it should be, the firewood should be available at the transfer station in the next few weeks, once we figure it out. Probably looks like at least what we had last year, if not more. So, quite a bit of firewood. Troop Twenty approached me. They would like to take orders for wreaths on some weekends in October at the transfer station. And they want to do a food drive there in November as well. And kind of keep them down in that little area between the equipment building and the container. And they, I, they asked about where should the food go? I said, well, we should reach out to each food bank and say, you know, what are your needs and give them what?
Do you, do they have a date on that time?
Not yet. I told them, keep me.
Because I think, but I'll, I'll, I'll have Janet get back to you. They were talking about doing a food drive for the pantry.
Yeah.
But maybe they can hold off on that. I'll, I'll, I'll mention it to Janet, have her reach out here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it doesn't.
Because there's no sense doing two food drives in, in a small town.
Yeah.
I'll have her reach out.
They can work together on it.
Yes.
That'd be great. Yeah. They did a pretty good one here a few years ago. They got to generate a lot of food.
Yes.
Kind of like a drive-through.
Yeah.
That'd be nice. There will be a hazardous, household hazardous waste drop-off event, October nineteenth. People should drop off their non-recyclable hazardous waste items at the transfer station, and we'll just bring them up to the event for them. Seen it work out really well last year and reduce the costs for us as well. Our workman's compensation audit has been completed. Laurel did all that. And our premium has dropped slightly by about a thousand dollars. The town's financial audit has begun. They're in the midst of doing that. It's interesting. It's the same auditor that's doing Region Twenty in Litchfield. I think someone else in the area too, so. It's gonna kind of help having that knowledge for him when he does the Region Twenty and the Region Six audit. And as I mentioned, we have the two resignations from Board of Ed. As far as any Board of Region Twenty update, I was at the last meeting, you know, there was a lot of public comment. I think the Board of Ed did a good job receiving that, you know, they allowed it all to happen, everyone to speak. That was well done. And I think there's a lot of operational issues they have to work through, you know, and I think it's starting to smooth out a little bit with the traffic. I don't know about the rest of the issues within the school, but, I don't know, have you been involved in traffic at all or?
I'm in it.
Yeah.
I'm one of them, but it's been, it's, it's like it just disappeared, to be honest.
Really?
Yeah, in the morning.
That's great.
I mean, there's normal high school traffic, as you would get anywhere, but it isn't what it was by any means.
Yeah, because we always had traffic there before, you know, yeah, with Womoga, so. Well, that's good, good to hear. You know, they're working on it. It's a lot of work. The financial part of it is evolving. I don't think we're really gonna know a lot until they complete an audit. And complete this, I think there's, at their next meeting, they're supposed to get the report of that financial consultant they hired to do his five-day review of the books or the budget. I, I really don't think we're gonna know everything or probably won't know everything in November either, but we'll know a lot more than. It just seems to keep on mounting, you know, more and more bills. I hear Litchfield has a bill for Region Six for four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. I was at Region Six meeting last night of their finance committee. They have outstanding invoices of four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that haven't been paid. There's some concern that not all those bills actually belong to Region Six. It could be some belong to Region Twenty, some might belong to Litchfield. The auditor's really got to figure that out, where all this goes, who's supposed to pay for it. So, the costs keep mounting. And they talked about the Region, Region Six pension briefly. They said they were waiting for the actuary report, but we already have that report, so maybe they can jump on that and review that pretty quickly. Like I said, it's funded around thirty-three percent. I feel that's low. I think at this point, when you close out a pension, you should be probably at least seventy-five percent funded and paying for your yearly maintenance fees, you know, for the actuary and the management of the pension. But it's not like it's a crisis. It's something that's gonna be solved over time and not right away, you know. It's not like we're gonna have to throw down, you know, a million dollars this year or something. It's gonna take time to bring it back up to where it should be. And they're working on it. Region Six Finance Committee was there last night. It was good to see them meet, and they're, they're looking at all this stuff, so. I don't know. It's a interesting, interesting time for us.
We don't know what their percentage was in the past though either, right, so?
The funded, it did drop from the previous report that I saw, financial report. I don't have all the specifics, but it definitely needs to start getting funded, you know, more, you know, to start catching up. Like I said, it won't happen overnight, but. And no one will go without a paycheck either, so.
In regards to the talk about referendum and all, is this date around that? I probably just want to make sure we're coordinating those dates.
Oh.
You know?
Yeah.
So.
We'll have to check on, you know, you're right, for the, the hearing that they want to have.
Right. So, we should coordinate with them.
Good point.
Are they still shooting for around December third for a referendum?
I think it was earlier, but that's the thing is to try and get our people in sooner so that they can be a part of all those discussions before it goes to the towns or, and I don't, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Yeah, maybe if we can get a little earlier, get people on board.
Right.
Time for that conversation.
People in there's best possible call down.
Well, we're trying to find people. That's gonna be a difficult one. I mean, who wants to jump into this madness right now?
The December third date was thrown around, but Litchfield said it wouldn't work in Litchfield, so they'll have to be on the same day for all four towns. So, they're gonna continue to work on that. I, I believe they got the question approved at the state for the ballot. I'm not sure. I just kind of heard that briefly last night from the superintendent. Be interested to see what that question is. Is it a, is it two questions? Is it one? That's gonna be, you know, the deciding factor for a lot of people too, which way they're gonna vote. So, we will keep an eye on their date for their hearing, because we don't want to interfere with that at all. And like I said, get someone in there sooner than later.
Right.
Yeah. I didn't have anything else. We have, you guys have anything?
Well.
Members of the audience? John?
I'm just here because of all the, the Region Twenty thing that I've been attempting to follow. And just am baffled by the, the numbers that are being batted around with who owns what and who's claiming what and, you know, and it, and it almost seems that some of the rhetoric that was out there, which I didn't want to believe, is coming true, you know, with Litchfield and whatnot. And it's just, it's really sad. It really, and I know Andy and, and, you know, well, and I'm really disappointed at how they treated, especially Andy and stuff. I talked to him, you know, over the summer. And for a split second, to be honest with you, I had a colleague of mine, because I'm a retired teacher. I have thirty, thirty-three years in the classroom, you know, when I was an elected union official and stuff. And I had a colleague of mine say to me, he says, well, I'm surprised you're not on the school board yet. And that's something I never thought about. And then when I, when this started coming up and there was an opening, and I talked to Andy and I talked to some of the other people and stuff, I just, I just listened to what they were going through. And I said, I don't want to be in poppies and get cursed at. I said, you know, we live in a small town and whatnot, and it's, it's, I don't know who in their right mind would step up in this atmosphere to do it.
I agree.
And I think it'd be, you know, it would be great to do it, but I just, like, I, you know, and I, I, I probably, I really felt bad for Andy, that, and just, you know, for his family and, and why not. So, I guess the, the question is, is so I give you a lot of credit for stepping up and kind of pushing back, you guys, so, which is one other reason why I'm here on the support of the board, because I see you guys pushing back. And I'm really kind of disappointed that more townspeople aren't here for this meeting, because I think we need to support you as you maybe push back as, as well. So, thank you for that. I mean, like even, and again, I don't know if, if Region Twenty stuff is even apropos to even talk about here. I mean, the whole thing with, with, I'll take one example, the, the gas pump situation. They, they're, they're turning around, Litchfield all of a sudden just turned around and said, we're gonna charge you a twenty cent surcharge on, on gas because we decided to, you know, to improve our, our gas station. I, I don't understand that. You know, so again, I don't know whether you guys have power over that or that's just simply Region Twenty, but then it's gonna, it bounces back on us as taxpayers, because somebody's gonna pay it.
Right.
Right? And you even just mentioned the four hundred thousand dollars floating out there from Region Six. Didn't they do a forensic accounting before they put all this stuff through?
No.
You know, no. Because we're all gonna get, you know, whatever.
Yep.
And, you know, whether it's next year or whatever, it's gonna happen. It's just, and I don't know what, what we could do about it.
Yeah.
If anything.
Yeah, I think there's still a lot of information that's gotta be gathered and gone through to really get it. I want to, like, an overall picture of where, where are we at? I think the academics will be taken care of. I, I truly believe they're gonna do that fine. It's the financial part of it I'm really concerned about, and we need the overall picture of every pot that we have to look at, whether it's the Region Six pension, Region Six debt, possible debt from the town of Litchfield, the region, current Region Twenty debt. We have to see the big picture before we can have really an informed vote on something, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I have full confidence in the staff as far as the academics and all that stuff. I mean, the, the, the traffic, or they opened up early, seven o'clock or whatever, let the kids in, so they, 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 they did that. So, it's, it's an ongoing problem solving, and those things will work, work themselves out, you know, whatever, whatever it is. It's the stuff that should have been known before all this happened, the financial end of it. This is where you guys are gonna have to come in, because sooner or later, I assume that they're gonna come to you and say, hey, you know, Morris owes six hundred thousand dollars. And where is that money gonna come from?
Right.
And now, you know, does Morris have, have the legal option to say, yeah, no. When I, you know, we can't afford, or we're not, we're not giving you that, because if we, I can't find it in, you know, in whatever accounting is, is, you know, I don't believe in what the accounting numbers are. I mean, it's almost like, you, you know, like a revolution is coming, and it's just like the dam is about to burst.
Yeah. Well, as every meeting comes along, we do learn a little bit more. It does also approach more questions as well. And we'll just see where it goes. We'll keep meeting with the superintendent and the, I think he's the acting CFO and the executive committee of the Board of Ed, the other first selectman, and try to keep on getting some answers and.
And what about, no, no, I'm gonna just shut up. What about the guy who, the original superintendent who left? Any talking or corresponding with him to find out where the, you know, kind of like a show being going on here?
I think there's some, some legal issues that'll prevent that right at this time.
Okay.
Yeah.
My suggestion was, I think they should get the Attorney General involved with. But that's just I agree. At this thing, they just need to get somebody in here just to kind of look at what, what the hell happened here.
Right.
Okay. I just have maybe an absurd, an observation or the fact that just sitting here, hearing what you're speaking tonight, reading, half of the stuff I read, I just throw it away. But seems to me that there's going to have to be a legal aspect to this before things are done. And, and, and permission gained, and, and whether it's right or whether it's wrong or whether it's fair, it, it's got to work that way. It seems to me that the legal part is sort of missing. We can't have four towns running around willy-nilly and not following what they should be following in order to gain the goal that was put before us.
Yeah, I think, you know, they are waiting on the financials to really have a clearer picture, and then I think there's definitely gonna be some legal opinions made on how to deal with the debt. And it's probably gonna be debt that's outside of what's proposed for bonding, because I think what's proposed for bonding is the Litchfield Public School debt at one point eight million and then nine hundred thousand for capital, which I don't know what capital it is that they're asking for right now. I haven't seen the list. But.
There are lawyers involved and.
Oh, yeah.
Guidance and, and so.
We're getting those bills too.
Yeah.
Now, that Litchfield, that one point eight, that was supposed to be already agreed to in the budget that we all voted on. That's, that's what's floating out there.
It, it was agreed to in the regionalization plan.
Right.
The Region Twenty would assume the debt from Litchfield and the debt from Region Six. I think Region Six was like one point seven million, Litchfield was one point eight.
Right.
Region Six, Six debt, right or wrong, was put into the Region Twenty budget. It's not clear that Region Twenty has the authority to pay off those bonds. That's something they have to work out, the Region Six bonds. The Region Twenty debt was supposed to be taken care of in a different way, and like, I think it was gonna be like a loan and utilizing the school buildings as collateral, which you cannot do for a loan. So, that plan fell through, and now they're looking at just bonding that money, paying off Litchfield debt, be done with it, and moving on. But the, the Region Six debt is still bonded for a few more years, I think. Yeah, so it's every day, something new.
I don't pity you guys. I mean, I, I, I do pity you guys. I just, you know, again, I I just wish there were more people here supporting you guys, because I, you know, I, I think you're the, you're the first, you know, first line of defense in a way.
We really need people to continue to step up the volunteer, because now we lost two good volunteers, and we need now two more.
We gotta understand.
Have a good vote.
Understand, boy. And I've, and I'm, and I'm one of them, you know, who would be willing to do it, but I, I can't. I just, because I know privately talking to people who are on that, and those two, I mean, I'm, I didn't know Jen resigned. I don't know if that's something even that's out there or not. But I knew, you know, talking to Andy in the summertime at one of our concerts that I helped manage. And he's talking to me about, yeah, I have to, you know, I have to get security. Someone has to walk so-and-so to the car. We're getting threats, you know, people cursing at me, people saying something to my kid, my wife, and I'm like, what? Like, that's the shit that's hard, like you see on the news with the book banning, you know, places and stuff. So, yeah, I said, I said, you know, again, I, I go back to the same thing. I said, I don't want to be standing in poppies or stopping child and have somebody come up to me and curse me out. I mean, I don't have kids in the system, but, you know, because of my education background and stuff, I thought, oh, okay, this, this may be interesting to do. I'll be down there. Yeah, I will.
Okay, it's sad and it's disgusting.
It is.
That actions like that would be taken by fellow citizens when we should be working together and not destroying what we have.
And these are two of our town people. That's what
Yes.
Even more, it's a team of ours, you know? So, yeah.
I'm embarrassed.
Well, it's unfortunate, but whether you're first selectman
I understand.
Any, on any board.
Yep.
Anytime there's controversy.
Yep.
People get.
I, I dealt with that as a union, you know.
Well, then you know.
Yeah, for dozen, yeah, yeah, yes.
And it's unfortunate, because people are volunteering under time, taking time away from their family.
Yeah.
To try to do the right thing. And hopefully, it'll get better once this gets resolved.
I think so.
And people can.
Like, how do you explain that to a prospective candidate to serve? You're gonna tell them exactly what they can look forward to?
We're also looking for a full-time superintendent.
What's that?
We're also looking for a full-time superintendent that needs to be attracted to this school district. We're going to hope that our teachers don't take this emotion on, and it affects their positions and their desire to be a part of it. It's very important. It's very fragile right now.
It is.
We have to find people that will come to the table.
I, I think hopefully that what'll happen is that hopefully somebody with kids in the system, who really curse the education of, of our kids, will step up. Because they, they have skin in the game after that, you know?
But we all have skin in the game, right? We're all taxpayers of it, and it's just attracting
Yeah.
People to our town for the future as well, yeah?
Well, I just look forward to working with the Board of Ed down the line, and hopefully the, I know the other three first selectmen are on board with that, and we'll offer whatever we can.
Yeah.
When is there, we, we talked about the fifteenth. When is the next Board of Ed actual meeting?
I think it's the seventeenth. They have one, special one this Thursday. I think it's this Thursday, yesterday. Seventeenth. I guess they must have gotten some word on the lease for Plum Hill Fields. So, they have that on a special agenda, going into executive session and then coming out with possible action on the Plum Hill playing fields lease. But I'm hoping, I'm taking that as good news, that they're gonna resolve that issue, because that's it's unbelievable it's lasted this long.
So, Tom, let me ask you, did the pay resolve the problem with you getting into James Morris School here?
No. You know, the fire company, they do have, there are keys, no fob. Recreation does not have a fob, and the emergency management director, which I'm deputy, we don't have a fob. So, I'd like to get that resolved. They did vote on their policy for school access at their last meeting. I haven't heard a word from them, what that policy is now and how it affects us. So, we'll see. As far as I know, Goshen is in the same boat. It's affected their recreational programs.
What's the difference in having a key and not having a fob?
Well, there's a key in a locked box for the fire department over there. And not everyone can have access to that box.
That's, that's what.
The Knox box.
That's the fob?
Yeah. And you want the quickest, most efficient access into a building that you can get, especially in an emergency. We shall see. Hopefully, they'll have an answer on that soon.
One more thing, just, uh, when is the accounting report coming up?
Uh.
We're looking to be paid for.
I think he was October, November. That would be the auditor.
Right.
Oh, the, the financial consultant that they hired from Ed Vance, he's supposed to give his report at the, I believe, the October meeting. And I don't know how in-depth of a reporter it will be, because it seems kind of limited in time at least.
Five days, I think.
Yeah. I'm sure he did a lot of work in five days, so hopefully it shed, shed some light on the whole subject here. But I would encourage everyone just to, if you can, attend the meetings, if not in person, online. It's, you know, the last meeting was very well attended. A lot of students, which was nice to see. And it's, it's worth your while if you can, and not everyone can.
Now, was that, I was not at that meeting, that meeting symbol, at least.
Yes.
From, from everything I've read, it was.
Yeah, I don't recall anything being like out of, you know, out of line at all.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or just good to hear.
And it's available online too, video. Anything else come before us? Or anyone online have anything to say? I don't see a hand or okay, is there a motion to adjourn at five o'clock? okay, is there a motion to adjourn at five o'clock?
I like the motion.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Thank you very much.